Hey, well, good morning, everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and I'm gonna ask Counselor Deputy Reeve Crick to open in a short prayer.
Lord, we thank you for the day that we have here and the MD that we have. Such a great place to live and work. Lord, I pray your blessing on all the staff and all the residents that live here, and pray your wisdom in this council meeting, that you give us wisdom as we make decisions here today. We ask us all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick. I have agenda before me. Is there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Reeve, members of council administration, we recommend two additions to the agenda. One is under business arising from minutes, the deputy Reeve's oath of office, and secondly, under, in closed session, is under section 24 of FOIP, Advice from Officials.
Should I remove this first one?
Under business arising, deputy Reeve oath of office.
Yes, go ahead.
Can we also add discussion about the committee of the whole? There's only one item on the agenda, and we might look at canceling that.
All right.
I don't know where we'd put that in the agenda.
Through the Reeve, to deputy Reeve and council, we could probably discuss that under, probably under the chief administrative officer, make it 9.5.2.
Anything else, gentlemen? All right, I'm looking for a motion then.
I'll approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion on our agenda. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Looking for a motion on adoption of the minutes organizational meeting October 24th. Thank you, Counselor Fedeau, for making that motion.
I just have a quick question there.
Yes, go ahead.
In regards to, let's see, the appointments, the Coal Lake Library wasn't captured in that? Is that something that, or is that just? Yeah, I know it's not officially an appointment, but it is, is Bonneville the same as Coal Lake?
Through the chair, to Counselor Fedeau, the Coal Lake Library Board appointment is, I believe, a three- or four-year term, whereas the Bonneville Library is an annual appointment.
Awesome, okay, thanks, explains that. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this, gentlemen?
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Fedeau, for making the motion to approve the October 24th organizational meeting. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Kerry, thank you. Looking for the regular meeting of council, October 24th, please. Thank you, Counselor Swager, for making that motion. Moved by Counselor Swager, on behalf of council, the council approves adoption of the minutes of the October 24, 2023, regular meeting of council as presented. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Kerry, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to the oath of office for deputy Reeve Crick at this time? I don't remember doing one of these already.
Mr. Reeve, you have the Bible, and I believe deputy Reeve Crick has the oath of office?
Oath of office, deputy Reeve, word one. I Joshua Crick do swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to law the office of deputy Reeve for the municipal district of Bonneville number 787. So help me God.
Congratulations. Yeah, we can give him a hand. All three of us? I guess we'll go on to 7, 7.1. Morning.
This is development application 2023-D-222. The applicants are Jen Withers and Jenna Merlin, and they are applying for a general commercial use for a tattoo studio in an existing mixed-use building. The property is on the corner of 50th Street and 50th Ave in the hamlet of Fort Kent. Adjacent properties are the Fort Kent Hotel, a church, vacant and occupied residential The applicant is applying to relocate their existing tattoo studio to Fort Kent due to the larger size of the commercial space. They have been in business in other locations under other studio names for 10 years. They plan to operate Tuesday to Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., with up to five employees. There will be a slight increase in traffic, and it will be passenger vehicles attending their appointments. Sharps are disposed of at local pharmacies, and other waste can be disposed of with domestic waste. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on October 24th, and we received no response. This is located within the Hamlet Main Street area structure plan, or sorry, Main Street policy area of the Fort Kent area structure plan 2020, and it is compliant with the use. Recommendations for development application 2023-D-222 is approved the request for a general commercial use for tattoo studio as a discretionary use as per Part 6 of the general regulations and Part 7, Section 76.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. Any structural changes requires a building permit. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act, and as per Section 60.5 of the Land Use Bylaw 1667, one sign not exceeding 1.5 square meters shall be permitted for the purpose of identification. Additional signs are required, additional signs require development permit.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just looking for a motion, yes, Counselor Fedeau.
Yeah, I'll make the motion for option number one, to approve it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Fedeau, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves development permit application number 2023D-222 for a general commercial use for a tattoo studio within southeast 3661, fifth west of the fourth meridian as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6 general regulations and Part 7, Section 76.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for mother maiden tattoo studios as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a great day. I guess we'll break now for Leila. Leila? Okay, we're gonna take a half an hour break to meet with the lady from closed session. Okay, looking for a motion then. Thank you, deputy Reeve Crick.
Question, why is it closed session? Is that her request, or is it ours?
Okay, we have a motion to go into closed session. I'll call for the vote. And that was deputy Reeve Crick that made that motion. Okay, welcome back. We need a motion. I think Counselor Crick made a motion to come out of camera. I'll call for the vote.
You did that in camera.
What's that?
You did that in camera.
We did? We did it already? Sorry. All right, we're gonna go to development application. Sorry, nope, going to public hearing, bylaw number LU577. So I gotta, I have to start? Okay. Before we begin this public hearing, I'd like to remind those who wish to address any of the public hearings on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of council chambers. I would also like to outline the process to be followed for this public hearing. We will begin with a staff report from administration, followed by questions from administration from council. We will then call upon members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak in opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of the public presenter during this time only. The applicant will then be provided with the opportunity to rebut anything they have heard or read in the opposition of their application, followed by questions from the applicant from council, only on information provided during the rebuttal. Finally, we will entertain any final questions administrations from council before closing the public hearing. May I have a motion to go into public hearing? Thank you, deputy Reeve Crick. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Go ahead, good morning.
Good morning. So today, we're looking at bylaw number LU577. This bylaw proposes to amend section 57 of the Land Use Bylaw. The bylaw will remove setback distances from oil and gas facilities, but will replace those setbacks with wording directing applicants and administration to the Alberta Energy Regulator and the Canadian Energy Regulator setback requirements. So I'd like to start off with prefacing that the AER and CER setback regulations are provincial and federal. Regardless of what we actually have in our Land Use Bylaw, we must meet those minimum setback requirements. So the Alberta Energy Regulator, or AER, has setbacks dependent on whether the oil facility contains sour or sweet gas, as well as depending on the density of the proposed development. That means that single homes generally have smaller setbacks compared to higher-density residential developments such as an entire corridor section or multi-lot subdivision. These setbacks for AER typically range from being adjacent to the right-of-way to 100 meters, 500 meters, and 1,500 meters. There are some additional setbacks for abandoned wells and facilities which require five meters distancing. Under the Canadian Energy Regulator Act, which regulates those pipelines that cross provincial boundaries, there is a prescribed area of 30 meters from the center line of the pipeline. Any development that is to occur within this prescribed area is required to obtain the pipeline's written consent and to make a locate request. So the objective of this proposed amendment is to allow for development and subdivisions to occur in proximity of oil and gas facilities, as the current regulations under the Land Use Bylaw are at times greater than those requirements of Alberta Energy Regulator and Canadian Energy Regulator. So again, I just want to reaffirm that the AER and CER requirements are provincially and federally regulated, meaning that we have to meet those minimum setbacks. There were some comments received, which you can find attached under appendix C from Enbridge and TC Energy, which they did request some additional wording be added to the proposed amendment. However, it was at administration's concern that these proposed amendments would be just as restrictive as what we are actually trying to replace. So they are looking to put in determined setbacks with physical numbers within the Land Use Bylaw, whereas the entire purpose of this amendment is to remove those numbers so that we only have to meet the AER and CER required setbacks. And with that, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
All right, councils, anyone have? Yes, Counselor Swager?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. I guess my concern is that it looks like it's gonna make it less restrictive, right? Because we're gonna follow their guidelines, and when I look through the appendix, though, there is no, like, it didn't, doesn't show me what our restrictions, well, you've crossed out our restrictions, but you haven't put their restrictions, and it just says refer to AER.
Yeah.
So I've just wondered, though, if anybody wants to, you know, if people are using this, then I guess they're, it's not just the general public using it, because then they gotta go up, dig up AER regulations, don't they? So, and those aren't in here.
No.
So no one from council knows what the new regulations are.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm a little concerned, and I, you know, I guess I gotta trust that you've gone through this and said, okay, this isn't gonna cause problems, but I'd be concerned that if, you know, if we opened it up way too much, then are you gonna have people right now that don't understand what's going on be very concerned because it's restrict, because we're making it, we're opening it up so that you might have an oil well really close to them or something? Can you kind of clarify that?
Absolutely. So the, there's a few questions in that. The reason we decided to leave out actually putting in the numbers for the setbacks as AER and CER require is because then that takes time for us to, if those, if those numbers were ever to change, we have to then go into our Land Use Bylaw and change them to match it, whereas if we just put in wording saying that it is required to meet those minimum setbacks, regardless of what we have in our Land Use Bylaw, people have to meet those regulations, and that way we aren't kind of going back and forth and changing our Land Use Bylaw for something that is required regardless of what's in the Land Use Bylaw. With regards to it becoming less restrictive, it, from the wording of the Land Use Bylaw at this moment, it used to match some of the wording that AER and CER had previously, actually. So, so at this point, the province has actually decided to tone back some of the setback requirements, and that's kind of, again, where this issue arose from, is that we put in wording at the time to match what AER and CER had, and now we are more restrictive. The province doesn't see an issue with this, with those setbacks, and as such, it's kind of logical that most municipalities will follow that. If you wanted to, if council wanted to have stricter requirements than what AER and CER require, that is possible. However, it is being recommended that we just match the AER and CER setback distances.
Okay, so I just asked, though, I don't know what their, I don't know what those setback distances are, because I haven't gone through all their, all their documentation. So, like, is, because this is our bylaw, should we, should we at least reference, reference the, like, I don't know, give links or whatever so people can actually, you know, click on a link and it takes them right there? Or can we, I'm just saying AER, then somebody's gonna spend a long time going through an internet search or whatever for AER to find the right documents, or no? Do you think not?
Nope. Well, when people come in, when they apply for subdivision development, whatever it may be, we will help them through the process. We are aware of those requirements, and we also refer to them during the subdivision process and development process if a pipeline or oil and gas facility is on the property. Additionally, it is relatively easy to find. You just type in Alberta Energy Regulator, and it's one of their main, main pages there for the setbacks. And of course, if anyone has questions regarding that, if they come in and ask us, again, we're more than willing to help them provide that information.
Thank you.
Counselor Slipchuk?
Yeah, this bylaw coming forward for correction, that's due to the fact because we did have a resident come in, and there was an issue with our regulations versus AER. So we are helping them to less restrictions, right?
That is correct, yes.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make motion for option one.
There is no, this is a public hearing. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you. I'd like to announce at this time that there's two written submissions, as provided in the agenda package as appendix C. And at this time, I want to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in support of bylaw LU577. For the second time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here wishing to speak in support of bylaw LU577. And for the third and final time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in support of bylaw LU577. Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to ask at this time if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw LU577. For the second time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw LU577. And for the third and final time, I'd like to ask if anyone's in, would like to speak in opposition of bylaw LU577. Okay, seeing anyone, I'd like to, any final questions for administration? Okay, I'd like a motion to close public hearing. Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making the motion to close this public hearing on I'll read the correct one. Moved by Counselor Kravjak, on behalf of council, that the public hearing for item 4.1, bylaw number LU577, amended LUB, bylaw be closed at 10:14 a.m. Any discussion on this? Okay, I'll call for the vote. I guess at this time, we're gonna go to 9.1.1. Consideration of motion, Range Road 460, speed limits.
And Mr. Reeve, before we deal with that, I would just ask Counselor Slipchuk, do we have a second or four?
Yeah.
It's not a submotion.
Sorry.
I'll second both, not a submotion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Fedeau, for doing that.
Reason this motion was brought forward is by, there was been continued interest requests, concerns by residents in the area and everything, and the Cory speed is a big factor, but also it's lots of heavy traffic on that route, and if you guys look at your map, it shows it's having like the first two miles, then it has the one mile, but I took that drive out again this morning and a few days ago, and I believe we could change that to reduce the speed limit from one, for one kilometer from the four-way stop to 50 kilometers an hour, who ends right at the end at a, where the forestry ranger station is, the development, there's about four or five homes in there, guys, traffic exiting and entering out of there, as well as further up, you got industry, Bab Industrial there, and then you got Max Oilfield and LLC and Industrial, which further up has a lot of traffic, workers in the morning exiting and entering onto the highway during hours of the morning and evening hours of afternoon hours of the day. So I think if we went one kilometer for the 50 kilometers, 2.4 kilometers, that's 70 kilometers, would help increase safety, because this is all, most of the traffic on that road is heavy trucks, big trucks, and I think this would be a benefit for the residents, which they are, we asked me to bring forward for them.
Okay, Counselor Fedeau?
So you're saying you wanted to do one kilometer for the, for the 50 zone, or, because it says two miles on the 50?
Yeah, just one kilometer to you. If you, if you remember, recall, if, I'm sure everybody recalls now, the north of the four-way stop.
Yeah.
You got where the forestry ranger was.
Yeah.
You got that little subdivision, just on the north side of that subdivision fence line, have that to 50.
Okay.
So from there up, 2.4 kilometers to the intersection of LLC and Max Oilfield.
Can I ask a question? Are you allowed to change anything on this proposal?
So, Mr. Reeve, members of council, just a couple things for clarity. Number one, the 80-k zone is actually a 100-k zone. That's not an 80-kilometer road, that's actually a 100-kilometer road. The motion that was presented was very clear in terms of, so it would require an amendment to the motion to actually change where it was. The other thing I would suggest to council is if you're interested in going down this, understand that this will come back as a bylaw, and it'll be much easier in a bylaw to pick a range road or an intersection to actually have the speeds, if there are gonna be speed limit changes, than in the middle, because I don't know how we define, when the bylaw comes, most of our speed limits are based on, at this, you know, 452 and 621 north will be this speed, and that's the way it would be in the bylaw. But that is 100-k zone, and if you want to change this motion to something different, it's just a typical, this is the motion that's, that actually has not been read into the record yet, other than at the, at the original notice of motion, but this could be amended through the normal, the way council normally deals with amending motions.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to know some clarity on that.
Yeah, the way it's proposed right now, I wouldn't be in favor of it. It's just like you'd have to drive for two, two, two miles at 50 k, and then you'd almost be at Rocky Top Corner, and you'd be going 70 kilometers an hour. You'd almost have to speed up to go around the corner. It's just, it's too far.
Rocky Top Corner is more than.
Sorry?
Rocky Top is more than three miles from.
I know, but as soon as you get, you're on the top of the hill, and then you're coming down the hill, and then you have to hit the corner to Rocky Top. That's a long ways for some of the go 50 and 70 kilometers an hour, an hour down a resource road. There is a lot of big, heavy traffic, but there's a lot of guys going to work in half tons there every morning. Yeah, Counselor Kravjak, then Counselor Swager.
Yeah, deputy Reeve, thank you. Isn't the limit just north of La Corie now 40 clicks for a short while?
No, it's just a little bit, 40, right?
Yeah.
And then it goes 50 almost to the ranger station, and.
So you want to increase.
Not, not quite, and then it goes 70.
Right.
Ends at 70 at the ranger station.
So you want to increase the 40 to a 50, you're saying?
Yeah, the 40 is only up to the beginning of the.
Willa Prairie, almost.
Where that, where ranger station was.
Yeah, but you're proposing 50 clicks from 55, which is right at the intersection.
That's what I was proposing, 50 to.
So, increasing from 40 to 50 there?
Yeah.
I'm reducing the other way for all those other businesses.
I'm reducing the other way for, because of all those other businesses and all the traffic.
I understand. To me, I travel on that road a fair amount. I see no issues there, but anyway, thank you.
Counselor Swiger?
Yeah, just, I guess clarify for me again there, Counselor Slipchuck. So, when you're going through, look, and I like what's, I like what's going on here, but, so through the Hamlet of La Corie, is it actually 40 right now? It probably should be.
Yeah, it is.
It is 40.
And so, yeah, why don't just keep it 40 through, like Mr. Hogan said, certain distance north, and then go, and then increase it to 70, and then go 100, yeah?
But it is right now. It's 40 to, you see where the Hamlet of La Corie is?
Yeah.
I'm sure to the, almost right across from Willa Prairie Hall, it's 40, and then it changes to 50 to get to the end of the blocks. And then it goes at the end of the quarter section there, at the Ranger Station, it turns from 70 to 100 there, I believe. Am I wrong?
Yeah, no, you're right.
So, that's how it's set up right now.
Okay, so it just needs a little bit tweaking maybe in the motion, so we can get the speeds right?
Yeah, if we could, I'd still interested in taking right up to that 2.4 kilometers or 3.4 kilometers out, keeping the, the slower traffic for that, for all those businesses there at that intersection of Northwest.
So, you.
1963, you know where Max is and where LLC is, that intersection there.
The correct, the, the two-mile corner, so you, you're telling me you want people to go from La Corie all the way for two, two miles at 50 K?
No, I said to the end of the Ranger Station, north of the.
Okay, that's where the 70.
The development.
Okay.
Take that to 40 then, and take the rest to 70.
Okay. So, how far do you want to go, 70, in your, all the way, like, two and a half more miles at 70?
Well, if I could take it all the way to the bottom range, if I could charge you all company by the hour, but no, let's go right to the north of the, up north of the Mac LLC, just about 100 meters north. Just before that intersection.
Would you like to, so, to change anything on this, we need an amendment. So, someone has to make amendment to the motion?
Just, just another question.
Yes.
Before you, so, so we're gonna get these, all these rule changes now. Are we gonna enforce these things, or is that something that, are we gonna pass it up when somebody does do 100 or in a 70, is that gonna get changed later on, when we start getting the phone calls? Just a obvious question.
It's a valid question. I don't know of any provincial highway or any other highway that would, that would go 50 that long, or even 70 that long. We're coming out of Bonneville here, and we're going 50 till the, you know, till you get to the veterinarian, and then about another quarter mile, you hit 70, and then you go for 70, and then you go to 100, you go to 100 right after that, on a major, on 41 here. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just further to that point, like going out on 28 towards Cold Lake, you go past the Coop and McDonald's and stuff there, and 70 rate, 70 rate by that spot, and just pass McDonald's and go to 100 right away. That's a pretty busy highway, too, so I don't know. I guess for myself, it's, it's not my area, I'm not gonna push it too hard, but if I was driving up there to work every day, I wouldn't be too happy if the speed limit was that low.
Counselor Syk?
Like I said, though, but, I mean, I like what you're trying to do here, I just don't want, you know, to create kind of a speed zone that make, makes it look like we're gonna, you know, be ticketing people all the time, if, if right now they're already doing 100 or whatever. So, I know you wanna, you know, slow people down, and I, I think you should, you know, through the hamlet, but I'm not sure how far north you want it, so maybe just, and I don't know, you're talking about Max Oilfield and different locations, I'm not really sure where they're at, but.
They're right at the corner, where it turns from yellow to orange, that's where that, there's two oilfield companies, one on the left-hand side, that's a little further down the road, and one on the right-hand side.
And so, what was the logic to slow it to 50 that far? I'm not sure.
50 just.
50 just to the edge of that hamlet, where there's five houses in that development where the Ranger Station used to be.
Okay, so.
Four or five.
Okay, so then, you're gonna change that, then not, not two miles at 50 then? Because that's what it says now, okay?
Yeah, like I said earlier, we go to one kilometer at 40, because it's one kilometer right to the north side of that boundary, from the four-way stop of the Ranger Station, where them four or five homes are. We went 50 there, and then 2.4 kilometers after that, so you're total of 3.4 kilometers at 70 kilometers an hour.
Okay, can, can Counselor Slipchuck amend his own motion? How does that work?
Through the reef, to council, I would recommend that the motion be withdrawn, and then a new motion, a new motion with whatever the new distances would, the speed limits would be. That would be the easiest thing. Just withdraw this motion, and although I don't even believe a motion's been made yet.
There's no, there's no motion that was made yet, so how does it work?
Counselor Slipchuck made the motion, and Counselor Fedeau seconded the motion.
Okay, all right.
So, if you, if you choose to withdraw and make another one, I think it would just require someone to second that motion again.
Okay, Counselor Slipchuck, you probably withdraw your motion, and then Counselor Fedeau would second it, and then you'd have to make a new motion and second it again? Is that correct, or no?
Wouldn't we need a secondary to withdraw, but we would need, we would still need a secondary for the new motion?
Okay, very good.
So, if I withdraw this now, then it would bring a motion forward at another council meeting, a different motion?
No, today.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we can withdraw this one, or to amend for changes, the discussion?
Okay, so we have a motion on, to withdraw the last motion, is that correct?
You just simply withdraw.
That's good, so we don't have to go through that? Okay. Would you like to make another motion, Counselor Slipchuck?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for this, the previous motion with the amendment of 50, 40 kilometers for one kilometer speed limits, and then 2.4 kilometers for a 70 kilometer zone, just so that we would be our, as per council discussion, just north of the, where the yellow ends, where it speeds up to 100,000, or 100, 100 kilometers an hour.
And Mr. Reeve, and members of council, to Counselor Slipchuck, I'm not sure if we're using kilometers, but unfortunately, the Range Roads are based, are based on.
Miles.
On miles. It would be much easier and much simpler to identify where the speed limits would change, if they were based on an intersection, as opposed to based on something that was in the middle. Because we have to identify in the bylaw, because this, although council may or may not pass this today, this will come back in the speed limit bylaw. And it, and the, the areas must be identified for us to be able to enforce it, otherwise tickets will be, any ticket that's given out could be challenged, because it was unclear as to where the zones were.
Well, then you'd just say 100 meters past this intersection, or whatever, right?
Well, Mr. Reeve.
We don't have a motion yet, so let's let him finish this motion, and then we can ask questions. So, where do you want to?
Okay, well, you see where that little Ranger Station, that must be on the west side of the yellow highway, just north of the hamlet of La Corie?
Right across from Proposed. To the left, to the left of Proposed, that place there? Yes.
The bottom one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
So, that's the boundary on the north there. If we went to 40 kilometers, right to that boundary, who got residences now to there?
Mr. Reeve, can I make a point here?
Yes, I guess so.
Like, half a mile is 0.8 of a kilometer, and 1.5 miles to that intersection 634 is 2.4 kilometers. So, what's so hard about that?
It's just easier for all of us, I think.
Okay.
Most of us.
We're just doing it for the reef, then, in miles. Okay?
And through the reef, to council, I just confirmed with the Director of Public Safety, that having things like 100 meters north of an intersection would just be challenged in court all the time. There has to be very clear in the bylaw delineated point in which the speed limit takes place.
Yes.
So, that would be, it's not clean, and it would likely be challenged, so.
So, he wants it on the north, north boundary of the, the subdivision there?
Yeah.
The La Corie Ranger Station subdivision. I don't know the proper name for it, but is that okay? Yeah, Counselor Fedeau?
Yeah, would it be a, a big difference if, if it continued from the edge of the hamlet, 70? Would that just, I, I don't, is that place that busy in there? So, I know in, in the moments past, I mean, I don't know how many residents live there, or, or what's happening there. I mean, I think people are slowing down at 70, that's, that's a, that's a, it's pretty good. I mean, we look at, in town here, from, from Players all the way down to, to Genmech, it's, it's all 70, right? I mean, I don't think 40 or even 50 would make a difference.
Well, while we were talking about keeping the 40, but I'm just gonna bring it to the north of that, that division. This way it gives you more time, because it's a lot of heavy truck traffic. That's where you're cutting and gravel and everything.
They're gonna slow down from 70 to 50, or to 40. I mean, it's not that big of a change, is it?
Okay, it's his motion, so you wanna go on the north, you wanna go on the north boundary of the Ranger Station, to 40 kilometers. Okay, then from there, what?
Right to just past where the red starts?
Yeah.
Past that intersection, say, do we use feet?
634.
Mr. Reeve, can I just use the Range Road there, Donnie, though, or the Township Road? Because I see how Hogan mentioned, though, if you just say 400 feet past this point, somebody will fight.
634 is the Township Road.
So, how about 70 to 634?
Yeah, 70 to just past 634. Because that's where you got entered, you're coming from north and south. Like, just north of that 634 to 70, I'm working on.
Okay, so you wanna go right to, to the yellow, to the orange, that's right on, 634 is where you wanted to go, 70 kilometers to there? And then after that, what do you want to do?
Well, I want to go 70 just past that intersection, so it's safe also from coming from the north.
Can we use how many meters passed, or, or at the?
Mr. Reeve, members of council, if I got pulled over for speeding ticket, and somebody said 100 meters here, 100 meters there, we'd be challenged in court almost instantly. It has to be clear delineation of where this starts, and we'd actually have to put out some, just because a sign gets put up, doesn't mean that that's where the speed limit actually, maybe it started, maybe it starts 10 feet away, 20 feet away. It is much easier in a bylaw to identify exactly the intersection that the speeds start and stop at.
What's the forced road there? What's the number on that road? The one that's a half a mile north of that?
That would be 633A, I believe.
So, would you want to go to 633A, Counselor Slipchuck?
Because each mile is an odd number, and then you have another half, so that's A.
Well, see if we can't go 100 meters past the intersection, I guess, so 633A.
So, sorry, are you saying that every speed limit starts and ends at a Ranger?
Uh, the, through the reef, to Counselor Carson, they typically should. They need a clear, we have a few that do not, but they're not clean. And if we're challenged in court, they would likely fail in court, because there's no clear place that it starts or ends. So, we have, we have Range Road and Township Road markers, we know exactly where something starts and something ends. How do we say, well, 100 meters past here? Then a guy says, well, I was past the 100 meters, I was this side of the 100 meters. It, it's not, it's quite challengeable, and, and as a result, likely not enforceable. So, to me, it would be just, we're, we're talking all of a half a miles here, is either stop it or have it start just before, because you're not gonna be doing 70 if it becomes a 70 zone in theory already, or have it stop at the next, at the next section line. I would suggest that potentially, council may be interested in tabling this, and having Don sit down with our Director of Public Safety to actually map out, because this has to come back as a bylaw. Any resolution that council passes today is to, really provides its direction to come back with a bylaw, and it'll have to be clearly articulated in the bylaw where the starting and endpoints of each of these speed limits are.
But we know pretty well, and like, if it's that Range Road and that Range Road, we can make a decision.
Absolutely, if you'd like to, for sure.
Okay, Counselor Kravjak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. I travel that road quite a bit, and that road north of La Corie is Range Road 460. So, what I will be doing now is going on Range Road 461, let it go 80 clicks all the way, maybe 85. And then go to 55, like a mile before that road. So, you'll have very, a lot of unhappy people who make some changes to this. But, that's me, thank you.
Any other discussion?
But on the other road there, you said you can go 80 on, you don't have the big heavy traffic that they have on that road, on 460.
It's, it's certain times of the day that it's heavy, but that's, to me, it's just too far for everyone to be crawling. That's, that's a long ways to be crawling with, I, I, I come through there, I logged, I logged in, I had to go through that intersection all last winter, with big, big loads and all, I never really had much of a, myself, but maybe I'm not in the critical times, right? But, all right, so we have, we need a, is, that's where you want them? Kind of, everyone kind of gets the gist of where he wants the cutoffs? So, I'll need a seconder on this motion.
Yeah, Counselor Fedeau is the seconder?
Mr. Chair, can we just get clarity for the motion, where those points are for the speed limits? Because I, I wasn't really able to follow the conversation.
So, someone correct me if I'm wrong here. So, Counselor Slipchuck wants it 40, all the way to the end, the north side of the Ranger Station. That's the subdivision on the left-hand side, with a L-shaped block with three other, three other subdivisions out of it, or blocks out of it. And then he wants to go 70 kilometers from there, all the way to 46, 463?
33A.
No.
434.
633.
Oh, he wants to, okay. No, you want it to go 70 all the way to that 633A. Okay, that, that would be a half a mile on the orange going north.
Oh, I see.
Right on the range, on the G on Range. You guys understand? Everybody understand that?
I don't understand.
Okay. Stephanie, do you guys understand?
So, she does. 634. 634. That's the, it's not, that's the wrong road, it's 634.
Yeah. They don't change the last number, they just keep the same number as the previous road, and they add an A to it, correct?
34A, like half a mile into the red?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that would be 634A, yeah.
You said 633.
Yeah, because I thought it was half a mile below.
Okay. Are you, yes, go ahead.
How fast is it now from, after you leave the hamlet?
So, right now, it, you know, Willa Prairie Hall, you, at Hawkeyes there, it's 40, and then it's 50, probably past that, it goes 40, 50, and then 70, right to the end of the gray. And then at 70, it changes to 100 in the way you go.
Okay.
That's the way it is now.
It's 100 at the end of the gray.
That's correct, yeah.
So, now we're gonna go 70.
From there, you're gonna go 70 all the way for two and a half, no, for a full two miles.
I kind of think that's a bit too far. It's, it looks like we're setting up a speed drop to get the ticket guys.
Cities do it all the time, too. It's not for a speed drop, it's for safety for heavy trucks and all that, the workers turn at that intersection of 634.
Okay, any discussion on this motion? You girls?
Mr. Reeve, if you can just clarify that, we got that correct.
Yeah, I believe that's right, unless somebody has. Is that good with you, Counselor Slipchuck? That's your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion by Counselor Slipchuck on behalf of council, that council directs administration implement a two-stage speed limit zone for traffic departing and entering the hamlet of La Corie on Range Road 460 as follows. 40 kilometers an hour going north from Highway 55, ending at the northern property line of the Ranger Station. 70 kilometers an hour going north, ending at Township 634A, then increasing to. four A, then increasing to current posted limit of a hundred kilometers an hour. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, it's too long of a stretch to going seventy clicks, in my opinion, also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, so, Councilor Slipchuck, can you tell me again why you think it needs to be seventy for that far? Like, are, is there a bunch of, I, I'm not sure, housing or, it said big trucks pulling out or something, but I'm not sure. I don't quite see it.
Well, LLC alone has about seventy people working there. There's a lot of traffic in the morning and afternoons. During the day, there's some certain days I've gone there where there's lots of traffic turning into LLC, and also into the Max, they got a shop on the east side of that intersection. So, and Babs used to be bad, but it's pretty quiet right now. It seems to be pretty empty there right now, but, uh, a lot of this, uh, like, what are you gonna do? You're gonna put forty kilometers for that intersection, change it back down to seventy for a mile? Like, I think that's the best way to go, and this way also, I think, maybe gain lots of complaints about, uh, brake brakes and that. You might eliminate a lot of those phone calls.
Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's defeated. On to nine point one point two. Councilor Slipchuck?
Yeah, uh, this one is about the stop sign to help, we believe this would help minimize, uh, vehicles cutting through the hamlet of La Corie, so they can miss the four-way stop during busy rush hours. And, uh, that's what I'm bringing for, is a three-way stop.
Yes.
So what's there currently for, is there any stop signs, or?
There's just a one-stop sign.
This one here?
Right on the, the north one. I believe it's north one, is that correct, Louis? Yeah.
Yes, Councilor Fideev?
So that's the one on the north, uh, with the east-west on Fifty-first Avenue?
Yeah, it's the highest stop sign.
Okay.
That one.
And that's where all the vehicles are always cutting through.
Yes, Councilor Kravjak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Could a person have, instead of two stop signs, two yield signs there?
No, I believe the stop signs would help slow the traffic down, cause the law residents said they've actually had, uh, one now, resident even chased after a guy was beating through, like, at least, I believe the stop signs would be more of a hindrance to also slow the traffic down and their safety.
Councilor Scarsen?
I just, I remember one time when I was living in a house that they put a four-way stop just in front of my house. It was a, a pull-through, and, um, man, the noise that that generated was phenomenal. I couldn't believe it, because then everyone was stopping and then starting. So it, it, like, I didn't really notice the traffic going through there before, but afterwards, it was non-stop. And then, of course, when, you know, they get the wrong guys with the wrong mufflers, whatever, then it was really loud, right? So, that acceleration, I'm just curious if this, you know, this guy in the corner might get that same problem, because, uh, people stopping there as opposed to just driving through, uh, it might be an unforeseen circumstance, right? So, I just had a little bit of experience with this, and I didn't like it whatsoever, so.
Yes, Councilor, correct.
Question for administration on this one. Do we, does this have to come back to the bylaw as well, or is this just a simple case of us putting stop signs up?
I believe the stop signs could just be done through resolution of council.
So then, I guess, if, if that's the case, we can put stop signs out there, if it doesn't work, we can take them down. It's, it's not, no big deal really.
Yes, Councilor Swiger.
Is there another solution, though, uh, local traffic only or something? Like, why are people cutting, they're coming off Highway fifty-five to go north, right? So they're cutting through the hamlet?
No, it's usually they're coming from forty-one south, and you got a buildup of traffic coming from the, from the range. And then they look ahead and they go, okay, there's fifteen cars ahead of me. If I hang, hang a left, go by Hawkeyes, by the Willow Prairie Hall, and I'm out. And it's, it's the guys going towards Coal Lake that take the advantage, um, is that, it's always been like, it's always been like that.
Okay, and it's, uh, it's work trucks, it's not heavy trucks, though, I'm hoping?
No, I've had reports of sometimes some heavy trucks, but not as much as one tons and stuff.
But if you're, if you're going across, just to comment, if you're going across country to, you know, you're not stopping at that stop sign anyway, you're just rolling through and the way you go. Like, uh, there's a stop sign, I, I also rent a land up there. I didn't even know there's a stop, like, I don't even recognize that stop sign on the right-hand side, cause anyone that lives there, they come up, then they go slowly, and they look if anyone's coming through there, and they just proceed on. So it's, um, I don't really, you know, I, I'm shocked that there's a stop sign there. I, like, I guess I didn't, you don't even look at it, so. See, and most of the people, like, a lot of the people that are coming, they're getting their mail there, so, um, at Willow Prairie Hall, there's all, all the people in the, in the local area, uh, majority of them that used to get their mail at La Corie. So where Forty-Ninth Street is, you can see the mailboxes there at the end of the spruce trees, to the north side of the spruce trees there, yep. So everybody's gonna be coming, and they're have to stop, and then on the way back, stop again, so, I, I don't know. I don't know if it'll deter traffic, I, I have no idea.
Well, it sounds like even if there were stop signs there, it'd still be a quicker route to get to that.
Sure, and you're gonna, you're gonna roll through anyway. Um, we had this, we had this debate, uh, years ago, and, uh, I don't know, I don't think we got anywhere on it either at that time. Yeah, Councilor Slipchuck, you wanna say something?
Yeah, well, the stop signs might, well, we, we gotta try something, cause they keep, their residents are upset with, they already had enough of vehicles cutting through there all the time. We just go same-o, same-o, or do we try something?
Well, you know, I, I think, uh, a speed bump would be probably better than a, than a stop sign myself, but, um, maybe there's implications for speed bumps as well.
Well, I've told, we can't put speed bumps on.
Okay, I'm just, just talking, I'm.
If you really wanted to deter traffic, you would just shut this portion of the road down, barricade it off, and then nobody would get through there.
Well, that's another big issue, I guess, to do, shut it down.
Yes, go ahead.
Can we, is there any way to enforce, like, just local traffic only kind of thing, or no, no through traffic, or I don't know?
Uh, through the, uh, Reeve, to the Deputy Reeve and the rest of council, so there is a way to do a local traffic only, but that's done through bylaw. You'd have to create a truck road or a local traffic only designation, but that would have to be done through a bylaw. You'd have to identify the roads that would be local traffic only. Um, and then, of course, enforcement's the problem. What, what does local traffic only mean? Uh, did you have to be a resident on that street, uh, a resident of La Corie, a resident of Ward Four, a resident of the municipality? Local traffic would have to be defined very clearly as to what that means, and, uh, and then, of course, enforcement. If the police officers aren't out there, and there's a truck rolling through, um, uh, we could place all the bylaws and all the stop signs we want, anywhere we want. It doesn't mean that they're going to be, it's gonna change anything particularly. And that's my, that was my worry with a local traffic only bylaw, is it's only as good as the level of enforcement we can apply to a local traffic only bylaw. Um, it doesn't end in a cul-de-sac, there's nothing like that. It's, it's, the road is almost a straight-through road. Um, uh, so I, I think of, of the options, um, uh, one of the reasons we, we didn't want a speed bump and transportation is opposed to them, is it makes snow removal very difficult to go through there with a truck and a blade, uh, to deal with, to deal with a speed bump. So, um.
Makes a circle.
So, yeah, local traffic only bylaw is the only way to do that.
Mr. Reeve.
Sorry, was Councilor Fideev?
Yeah, with the, uh, with the local traffic only, it's tough to really, uh, do anything when you have mailboxes there. People are using it from everywhere. It's just, uh, sounds like a nightmare.
Councilor Kravjak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. What would work best there is a, a small traffic circle like they have in One Dare.
Sorry, Council, that was funny. I, I think if I'm, if I'm a guy coming from the north and I wanna get home, and I got one stop sign that I can rip through, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, like, the stop sign ain't gonna deter me from going that way. There's no consequences, right? There, there isn't. Like, we talked about this years ago. The guy that's gonna go, he's gonna go. And, uh, I, I don't think stop signs are gonna go. Well, I can, I can, I can deter twenty vehicles in front of me, I got one stop sign, okay, I'm gone. But I don't know the answer either, cause we talked about this years ago. Yeah.
Reeve, it doesn't, doesn't kill us to try it, though, I guess, does it? I mean, it's not a bylaw then, is it? It's just put some stop signs up. If it doesn't work, well, I don't know. Is it worth trying?
It's your, it's, it's up to council. Yes, uh, Councilor Slipchuck, do you wanna say one more thing?
No, uh, the one thing about stop signs, they won't just cut through there, and maybe it'd be, at least slow the speed down, because, um, they gotta come to a stop. They wanna risk going through a stop sign, six points off your drivers.
Is it about speed or about people going through?
People going through and speed.
Okay. Yes, Councilor Scarsen?
Well, like I said, I, I agree. I don't, I think if, if people have a way to get through in a stop sign, it's probably, it'd be, it would probably be treated more like a yield sign, I would guess. And those that are stopping, I, I know you'll have this guy here telling you that he's gonna be pretty mad about that, cause it's, you're gonna be accelerating in front of this house non-stop, so. Anyways, I, I don't know what the solution is. I'm not sure if it's stop signs, though, to be honest. I, I think if you wanna eliminate through traffic, you gotta eliminate the, the whole road altogether. I don't know how that looks, but.
Would administration have an, uh, suggestion?
Sorry, go ahead.
Would administration have another suggestion? That we can deter this cutting-through traffic?
They might, but maybe not at, right on, off the cuff here. Um, yeah, well, yes, go ahead.
So is the, is the worst one, Donnie, the, coming, when they're coming north, or from the north down Forty-Ninth Street, that's kind of the, that's where you're trying to stop, so they're not booting through town that direction? Cause I'm just thinking, leave, leave your stop sign on the Forty-Ninth Street when they're coming south, sorry, when they're coming from north-south. Leave that stop sign, make the other one that Council, Councilor Scarsen said a yield sign? So maybe two stop signs and a yield, or maybe two yields and a stop? I think it's from the north down that's the problem, right?
Um, they're, they're gaining it from both ways. From the south to going north.
Okay, two stop signs and a yield? I don't know.
Okay, well, why don't we?
Well, to be clear, I didn't recommend a yield sign there anywhere. As I said, a stop sign would be treated as a yield sign, I'm sure.
No, you're right.
But I don't think you could have a stop sign on one side and a yield sign on the other. I don't think that would work at all, so. Well, you just had, someone had a stop sign, assuming that the other guy was stopping.
Boom. Yes, Councilor. Oh, sorry, Deputy Reeve, correct.
Through the Reeve to Councilor Slipchuck, have you talked to the landowner in the House right that way at the intersection? Do they want stop signs put up, or?
There was other residents that, from ones that lived to the north and to the east.
Yep.
That house just got, uh, residents in it recently. Young family, a bunch of children.
All right.
Not clear on the answer there. Did they want, see, you haven't talked, and they don't, you don't know if they want stop signs?
They're the ones that suggested, maybe let's try three ways to be, uh, stop signs.
Okay.
Cause I said speed bumps, and they said those speed bumps, uh, probably won't work.
Would you like to make the motion, then? Uh, your, whatever motion, wherever the motion is, would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, stay with this motion, three-way stop sign.
All right. Thank, uh, sorry, I need a seconder for that, or you second both of them already. Apologize for that, gentlemen. Um, I'm just gonna read the motion here. Moved by Councilor Slipchuck on behalf of council that council directs administration to implement a three-way stop at the intersection of Forty-Ninth Street and Fifty-first Street Avenue in the hamlet of La Corie. Any discussion on this?
Is that a dirt road, or is that a?
Dirt road, yeah. Well, no, it's a, it's a, it's kinda, it's a cold-mix road. I just, uh, do, do we even know how many people get their mail there? There, there's gotta be at least sixty boxes there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just, for the people picking up mail every, every other day, that's gonna, I don't know how it's gonna go. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Well, I think you're, it's gonna lead to some unattended consequences, which are earlier.
Okay, on to nine point two point one.
Mr. Reeve, would council be interested in taking a five-minute break?
Yeah, sure.
This'll be a fairly long report.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. Good morning, Matt.
Morning, Reeve and council. Uh, today I have the, uh, Environmental Protective Services' third quarter report. Administration is presenting council with the Environmental Protective Service Department quarterly report for the month of July, August, and September. The quarterly report is to provide council with an update of activities undertaken within the branches of the department within our third quarter. So first, we have agricultural services.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council. I will be presenting the third quarter report for egg services. We will start with our pest control program, the beaver reduction and blasting. We removed a total of a hundred and ten beaver dams to date. Four were, four were with the use of explosives, a hundred and six were either removed by hand or by mechanical equipment. Over the past few years, regulations for the removal of dams have increased significantly. If dams are located on a fish-bearing stream, approvals are required from both the DFO, and then we will require a water act approval after that. DFO reported to me that they are backlog for months with their reviews, and a water act approval can take up to an additional six weeks. This has added, this has added obstacles to our process and has us opening a larger number of dams by hand to stay compliant. As you will note on the green graph, the beaver reduction program is being utilized by our landowners. We have more than doubled our numbers from the same time last year. I believe a contributing factor may be that we are training more trappers through the Alberta Trappers Association by hosting these courses through the M.D. Our coyote and wolf reduction program started on November first of this year with a slight change to the program. We have increased the usage of ten-eighty tablets, and the reports of livestock predation by wolves has increased, has increased this year. Um, so we have increased the wolf bounty from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty dollars, and coyotes will remain the same at fifteen. Next slide. Even with the late start due to the dry weather, the team rallied together to complete the mowing program this year. A total of sixteen hundred and fifty-two kilometers of road sides were mowed as the crow flies. All eighty-four subdivisions were mowed twice, and all hamlets have been mowed, were mowed four times this year. As you will note on the blue bar graph, the fence line clearing program has currently paid out twelve thousand a hundred and eighty-seven dollars so far, but we still have nine thousand dollars waiting for completion and approval, bringing the amount for about six hundred dollars higher than we did last year. How do I make it go, just click it? Oh, okay, okay, thank you. With the inspection of two, two thousand six hundred and fifty-five locations this year, we found eight hundred and ninety-seven that required some kind of weed control. We issued twelve weed notices for non-compliance and the, with the weed inspectors, and all twelve notices were resolved. This year, we sprayed fifteen hundred and thirty-eight kilometers of roadside, equating to about a quarter of the M.D. We then continued on with our crop inspections. Ten fields were surveyed this year for club root with no positive cases identified. We swept forty-eight locations for grasshoppers, and again, this year, we had pockets of very large numbers. Each year, we set out pheromone traps for a six-week period to collect information on Bertha army worms. We found the southwest corner of the M.D. with the highest numbers, and farmers should be keeping an eye on their crops in the spring. We found the southwest corner of the M.D. with the highest numbers, and farmers should be keeping an eye on their crops in the spring. This slide shows the usage of our agricultural rental equipment for the past two years. The rental units are slightly lower than last year. I believe some of the contributing factors include the change of location of one of our satellite sites and possibly more cattle being shipped last year with the lack of forage that was available. Get to see it all there? Okay. We have entered into a five-year M.O.U. with the Alberta Conservation Association to assist with the irrigation pumps on the little, Little Bear Lake each, each winter. The installation of the pumps has been completed for this year. So if you're out on the lake, please beware of the thin ice. And last of all, a final reminder that the transition from municipalities to local ag retailers for the disposal of agricultural container recycling will conclude this year. The Bonneville Seed Cleaning Plant Container Site will be closed permanently on December thirty-first of this year. I'm now open to any questions?
Yes, uh, councillor Fedeau, then councillor Slipchick.
Hi, in regards to your, uh, your wolf program, why the big increase?
We've had so many calls about predation this year, and our ten-eighty tabs, we opened the program to reduce the use of the ten-eighty tabs with secondary poisoning, and we're all over, already past twenty-four tablets this year, which is almost three times last, of last year. So, uh, a lot of wolves have been coming in, and we've increased the bounty on that.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Councillor Slipchick?
Yeah, my question is, uh, you did a hundred and ten dams. How many of those dams do you figure were done and having to be done in drainage ditches of the M.D.'s? Registered drainage ditches?
With the blasting, all four. Yes, and I would, I would say that the removal of the other, or either to protect our infrastructure, so not only on, uh, they will be along the roadside or in the drainage ditches, the majority of them.
Okay, these drainage ditches, I think a big contributing factor was that lots of them have a lot of trees growing in, they're not being maintained, that maybe we should look at a maintenance program that would, uh, get rid of these trees in them?
It's my understanding over the last couple of years that they have put a maintenance program in place for the drainage ditches.
And then, uh, one more question is on the recycling program. Are we gonna make sure we put that in the rural review so prior to December thirty-first, so that there's more, uh, information out there so that everybody realizes that we're done there with seed cleaning plant with chemical containers?
Yes, we've put up signs, and we will be putting it in the rural review as well.
Yeah, that was my biggest, I had some farmers phone me and ask me if it was still open, and I told them that it was, but till the end of the year, so. Uh, the more information we have out there, I guess wherever you buy your chemical, you'll be able to take them back is the short answer for all that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right on.
Any other questions? Yes, councillor Swagert?
Uh, just, it's a question about weed control, and I just wondered, have we noticed the provinces, is the province doing kind of their end on the highways? Or are we having issues? That are spreading into our M.D.? I don't know.
The province is making strides to get better at their weed control in the highways. It's been brought forward through resolution with the Ag Services Board.
So they're not... Yeah, that's kind of a wishy-washy answer, isn't it? But it's, it's probably the politically correct one, I suppose. Thank you. Yeah, because I've heard that from other counties too, that the province kind of hasn't kept up their bargain on the weed control, and it's causing them problems in their, other counties, so.
Through the Reeve to councillor Dana. Um, one of the things is we've always had a really good relationship up here with Alberta Transportation, and they allow us to go and spray the weeds for them, and then we send them bills for our time on it.
But even the mowing pro, program, the, everything's already seeded out in our area, and they're doing the highways for our area. Did we, was there anything that ever entertained with us doing a job and sending them a bill as well, or did they ever go into that, or, or do you know anything about that?
Not a question to ask?
I think that I would probably prefer Matt to answer.
Yeah.
Um, yes, through the Reeve. Uh, so to answer that, we have previously in the past, um, been into a contract with the province to provide mowing services. Uh, we haven't had to do that in the last few years. Um, they have been able to find, uh, operators to do their mowing program. But the mowing program only starts usually in late August, when, like you mentioned, the, the seeds have already gone to seed, or the weeds have already gone to seed, and then they just are spreading them all over, so. Um, yeah, previously, when, when there has been some mowing that, that's been done, we have, we have helped out a little bit. But we, we are in a situation to, to take over their operation of their mowing program.
Yep. Hey, thank you. It just seems like the further south you go, everything's mowed. Maybe they should start in the north once, and then go towards the south and see how they'd like it down there.
Yeah, there, there has been many, uh, resolutions through the provincial Ag Service Board on, on the mowing of the provincial highways and having them treated equally, uh, throughout the province. But, yeah, there is a big discrepancy between.
It's terrible. It's pretty obvious. You just gotta go south, and it just starts getting mowed. Uh, okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
I'm here to present the third quarter report for the Waste Services Department. Starting off, here's a list of landfill visitors to each of the sites during the third quarter. Ardmore, which was open Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, saw thirty-five hundred twenty-one visits, down slightly from the third quarter last year. Fort Kent, which was open Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, saw nineteen hundred thirty-eight visits, down thirteen point five percent from quarter three last year. Goodridge, which is open Friday and Sunday, saw three hundred and forty-nine visits, down two from quarter three last year. Hilda Lake, which is open Wednesday, Saturday, and Sunday, saw thirteen hundred nine visits, down twenty-three percent from last year. Most likely, the reason for this is the opening of the new Riverhurst bin site, which allows residents of the area to drop off their household waste and recycling more conveniently. Lacoury, which is open Tuesday through Saturday, saw nineteen hundred eighty-seven visits, right on par with quarter three last year. Muriel Lake, which is open Wednesday and Sunday from April first to October thirty-first, saw five hundred nineteen visits, down fifty percent from last year. This can likely be explained by the Muriel South bin site beside the Muriel landfill um, being put into use year-round for twenty-twenty-three after the removal of the Muriel West bin site last fall. And then Theoryon, which is open Monday, Thursday, and Saturday, saw a thousand eighty-seven visits, up fourteen point eight percent from quarter three last year. With the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission, waste hauling continued as scheduled. There are twelve transstore waste transfer bins located at five landfill sites around the M.D. that are owned by the Waste Commission, but most of the maintenance is done by the M.D. One transstore at Hilda Lake had been giving us issues for over a year and required a hydraulic pump replacement. The Cold Lake landfill waste account has been well-received with both M.D. residents as well as the city of Cold Lake landfill staff. As of September thirtieth, a hundred and ninety-three accounts have been registered to use the landfill for dropping off their household waste. The M.D. of Bonneville is in the process of registering for the Extended Producer Responsibility Program with the Alberta Recycling Management Authority. This program shifts the, the physical and financial burden of collecting, sorting, processing, and recycling household recyclable materials to the producer and away from the local governments and taxpayers. What this means for us is we will be compensated for the household recycling operations that we manage here in the M.D., including the hundred and thirty-four recycling bins and the two days per week spent collecting and hauling recyclable materials. This fall, there is a series of engagement sessions with the Producer Responsibility Organization, or PRO, that will help us in the transition to this new program, and there will be meetings with each municipality to work out the details in the coming months. The program is scheduled to begin April first, twenty-twenty-five for municipalities who register this fall. Operations and landfill staff continue with site inspections of our bin sites and landfills on a minimum quarterly basis. We strive to complete these monthly to help ensure our sites are safe and effective for all staff and residents. The new Riverhurst bin site has now been in operation for three months, as it was open to the public June twenty-ninth. The site has been well-used and well-respected, with very little illegal dumping occurring, and we have received lots of good feedback from both phone calls and conversations with residents at the site. The Fort Kent transfer station wrapped up its final quarter in quarter three and was transitioned to a bin site on October third for household waste and recycling drop-off, available to residents twenty-four hours a day, seven days per week, like our other bin sites. At the August twenty-second regular meeting of council, council passed bylaw eighteen fifty-four to amend the Waste and Resource Recovery Management bylaw to allow for community halls to submit a written request to receive waste collection service at their locations. As a result, the Cherry Grove Hall received a locked bin at the end of August for service. In September, the automated gate system was installed at the Ardmore landfill. A contracted electrician and waste services staff completed the underground wiring for the gate operators and the ground loops. Following that, Phoenix Fence installed the gates and operating systems, and as of October twenty-seventh, we had registered nine hundred and fifty-four proximity cards and three hundred and thirty smartphone app accounts for the site. Also in September, five waste services staff members attended the Alberta Coordinated Action for Recycling Enterprises, or Alberta Care Conference and Training in Grand Prairie, where we discussed opportunities for increased waste diversion, such as the shredding of Class Three waste headed for our landfill pits and the shredding of our clean wood waste, which we're gonna be piloting here this fall. Lastly, at the conference, I was selected as the new vice chair of the Alberta Care Board of Directors.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions? Scott Free, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Here to deliver the, uh, third quarter report for public safety. Let's make this a little bit bigger for you. All right, so we continued with crime, uh, crime prevention patrols throughout the, uh, July to September period. We've got our statistics here. Campgrounds, two hundred and forty-six patrols, fire halls were fourteen. Community halls were sixty-five, landfills one thirty-nine, and bin sites accounted for a hundred and thirty-nine, uh, patrols as well. And then we've got our wards, hours, kilometers, and visits, fairly standard. Any questions on any of these numbers that we're seeing? Concerning our industry contracts, maintaining our contracts, um, we provided two hundred and seventy-six hours of patrol services to our industry partners on a fee-for-service basis during the third quarter. And as a result of, uh, some of those vehicle inspections, uh, eighty-one inspections were conducted, of which thirty-one vehicles were temporarily put out of service for a variety of, uh, of reasons. Seven overweight vehicles were also apprehended and charged, uh, during the third quarter with being overweight on M.D. roads. Additionally, our written ticket counts, um, looks like we've got, if you look at bylaws on the top one, we've got the last three years uh, for the third quarter, so these are numbers for the third quarter of each year. Uh, provincial tickets, you'll see a hundred and twenty in twenty-twenty, followed by eighty-two, a hundred and ninety-six, and then three hundred and eighty-four warnings. And you'll see three twenty-two, five seventy, three seventy, and four eighty-nine, and then we've got our bylaw ticket count there as well. So provincial tickets have come up quite a bit since, uh, back in the early, early twenty-twenty's. Also partnering with our, uh, other agency departments in the area, it looks like we've got ten law enforcement-related project files that were investigated. And we typically partner with, uh, with the sheriffs, as, as we know, um, with the R.C.M.P. as well, a little bit with the B.R.F.A. for some community stuff. So, uh, been quite busy with partnerships in the third quarter. Pretty trespass act, we're starting to see if, you know, we've been fairly busy with, uh, with unsightly leaves this year, at least it seems that way. Again, these numbers are, uh, for the third quarter of all the respective years, uh, according to the rule. Uh, so you'll see that the numbers are fairly standard. There's really not a whole lot of change. Dogs are down a little bit. We had quite a peak last year. Dogs seem to be a little bit more in line this year, but it just kind of comes and goes. Unsightly seem to be fairly popular right now for us. I don't know if it's just a, a situation where people are trying to get, you know, the neighbors to tidy up before the winter hits and, and that kind of thing, so we're getting a little bit of that, uh, right now. But, uh, and we were seeing that certainly during the third quarter. Finally, the School Resource Officer Program presented, uh, seventy-eight presentations to over, uh, one thousand and sixty-five students during that third quarter of twenty-twenty-three. Any questions on public safety activities for the third quarter?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so seeing that, that, uh, council accepts Environmental Protective Services, a third quarter report as information.
All right, looking for a motion. Thank you. Councillor Fedeau for making the motion. On behalf of council, that council accepts Environmental Protective Services two thousand twenty-three third quarterly report as information. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you, sir. Have a great day. On to nine point three, point one.
Today, I am presenting, uh, bylaw of five seven five, which amends the land use bylaw sixteen sixty-seven for second and third reading. The proposed bylaw creates two new direct control districts, DCD number five, which is the Municipal District of Bonneville Regional Airport, YBY, and Direct Control District number six, the Industrial Direct Control District, DCI. We had the public hearing on September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, and concerns were brought forward about the airport district. We did some changes to alleviate the concerns, um, as seen in Appendix B, uh, which include changes to the definition of hangar and the ability to place C cans on the lot. So Appendix B shows you what we changed. Appendix one would be the final. A recommendation for council is that bylaw LU five seven five, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to amend bylaw number sixteen sixty-seven, the land use bylaw, be given second reading as amended, and that bylaw LU five seven five, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to amend bylaw number sixteen sixty-seven, land use bylaw be given third reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll move second reading, and thanks for making the changes.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number LU five seven five, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to amend bylaw number sixteen sixty-seven, land use bylaw be given second reading as amended. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Looking for another motion for third? Thank you councillor Fedeau for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number LU five seven five be given third reading. number LU575 be given third reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto 9.3.2.
Alright, thank you, council. So today, we'll be reviewing the process for the Browns Area Structure Plan adoption up until this point. So to begin, the Browns Area Structure Plan has received first reading on December 14th, 2022, and a public hearing was held on January 24th, 2023. It was referred to external agencies, including Alberta Transportation, however, AT or Alberta Transportation's comments were received after the date. So Appendix A provides a map showing the proposed layout of the Browns Area Structure Plan. Please note that there are proposed, or there may be proposed changes based on comments received during the public hearing and based on Alberta Transportation's requirements. So AT's requirements raises concerns regarding the existing access, as can be seen on, sorry, if we could bring up Appendix A there, just on the northern portion there. Alberta Transportation has noted in the referral that the existing access is to be removed and that the road located within Phase 1 and 2 be developed to create legal physical access to the properties. This is a common requirement of Alberta Transportation during the subdivision that the municipality has seen before. All direct access to the highway is considered temporary and are typically diverted to municipal roads as density increases. This requirement is part of the reason for the delay for the Browns Area Structure Plan. It would place a large financial burden on the developer for requiring the amount of road to be developed, whereas typically developers like to have a sale of a few lots before building up that kind of bank before they go into large development of roads. So the developer would like to maintain this access in compliance with the Highway Geometric Design Guide, which has been attached as Appendix C in the highlighted area. So please note that this section applies to specifically commercial access. At the time of first reading and public hearing, all of the properties or parcels on the eastern portion there were designated as industrial. So based on those comments, the developer has indicated interest in redesignating or identifying those, some of a portion or all of those parcels to commercial in order to meet the requirements of Alberta Transportation. Additionally, based on the comments provided by AT, it is noted that access spacing of 1.6 kilometers is the general requirement, whereas the 400 meters, as noted in the highlighted section, is used only when there is a topographical constraint limiting the location of the access. So another concern of AT is with regards to the traffic impact assessment. So based on the comments from AT, the traffic count numbers were not conducive of regular peak traffic. As a result, an updated traffic impact assessment has been asked for. The update for the traffic impact assessment has been postponed at this time, however, as discussions continue between the developer and AT. However, should Alberta Transportation continue to require an updated TIA or Traffic Impact Assessment, further requirements regarding intersection treatments and such may arise from that. So with that, I would just like to note that control and jurisdiction of highways is done through Alberta Transportation. These requirements are typical ones seen with most multi-lot subdivisions within the MD. It is the developer's responsibility to comply with AT requirements. And with that, if you have any questions at this time, I would be happy to answer them.
Yeah, just it was a comment that you made that, little concerning when, the comment was that Alberta Transportation considers any access as to a highway temporary, and so, you know, that concerns me that any, you know, all the businesses we have along even Highway 41, the problems could come along, say, remove all those accesses. So it's just, it's kind of a bit concerning, and it's just a general comment, I guess. But I will make another comment. I've been in contact with Browns kind of regularly, and so they are in, last week, they were in discussions with Alberta Transportation, and they have ongoing discussions with them directly, so, you know, hopefully some of this stuff maybe changes. Because as it is now, it looks like Alberta Transportation's, you know, kind of being a bit hard maybe, and then probably a lot of this stuff doesn't happen in the MD because they have no access, so they gotta use our township roads, and I don't think the township road that they want them to use is really appropriate, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Yes, Counselor Fedeau?
I think just a comment, I mean, I don't think we should be scaring people to think that any industrial place is going to be subject to, you know, to removal of the driveways. This is just basically solely based on the development, it's not just that one. And right now, there is a, it is a temporary for that one building, if they're going to expand into a development, that's where the issue comes in, has nothing to do with any highway access right now to any individual building, so I don't think we should be scaring people saying that the driveway should be, or will be removed.
Any other discussion or comments? Okay. Looking for a motion? Yes? Okay, thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council, the council accepts bylaw number 1829 Browns Area Structure Plan bylaw information as update report as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried, thank you. Onto 9.3.3.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
I'll be presenting the next report for Ms. Foliate, as she is away sick today, unfortunately. So this item is a follow-up with regards to delegation presentation, which was made by Innovative Development Group at the regular meeting of council on October 24th. They are requesting the municipality cost share the intersection treatment to Highway 897 at the entrance of the West 55 Industrial Subdivision, located northwest 1363rd, third west of the 4th Meridian. The intersection treatment was a requirement of the approved subdivision, Phase 2 of the West 55 Industrial Subdivision. On August 26, 2013, Innovative Development Group entered into a development agreement with the MD wherein they committed to completing the local improvements, including the Type 3A intersection treatment. Innovative Developments Group is requesting that the MD cover the total amount of the intersection treatment, quoted up to $588,786, or consider contributing to the cost of the intersection treatment. Historically, the municipality has agreed to cost share three intersection treatments during the years between 2008 and 2013 at 50% of the total cost to a maximum stated amount, as identified in attached Appendix F. Other things of mention, the Aurora Borealis Estates subdivision on Highway 41 for a multi-lot industrial intersection treatment, that one was covered at 50% to a maximum of $179,000. This is just referring to those historical ones which were approved. That was completed in 2017. Back in 2010, the Cold Lake Industrial Park on Highway 55, intersection treatment of 50% to a maximum of $195,000, which has still not been completed. And the Britannia Construction subdivision on 55 at Cherry Grove for a multi-lot residential intersection treatment to a max of $77,000. This was completed in 2016. Attached for council's review is the letter from Innovative Development Group, along with their submitted quotes for the intersection treatment, their subdivision conditional approval letter stating the requirements and conditions for that approval, our agreement with them also dated back in 2013, a copy of the location map, and where the Type 3A intersection treatment is required. Reference to our strategic plan is, this is referred back to goal number one, building a viable and diversified regional economy, goal three, promoting community development. Reference to provincial legislation is, this is covered under subdivision and development regulations through the province. Potential costs and source of funding, based on the quotes provided, the intersection improvement is looking at a cost of approximately $588,786, and we currently do not have a source of funding for this cost, should council choose to approve their request. Administration's recommended action is that council denies the request by Innovative Developments Group for cost sharing of the intersection treatment to Highway 897 at the entrance of the West 55 Industrial Subdivision, located as per that legal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Fedeau?
I think their request is not to share, I think their request is for us to pick it up completely, right? So there's also in Appendix A, in their letter, on page two, that there is a mention of an off-site levy that, for the drive or the extension. Is this at all possible? There's any conversation with the developer, have they at all looked at adding the extra cost to the upcoming lots for sale?
Through the Reeve, we currently do not have an off-site levies bylaw in place, however, it is one that we have been tasked to start looking into and hopefully have in place next year. At this time, I don't believe we can institute an off-site levy, however, I'll defer to the CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. The off-site levy bylaw is currently not in place, it's a fairly arduous task to create an off-site levy bylaw. Typically, you would not go backwards with an off-site levy bylaw, and an off-site levy bylaw, even if we had one in place, typically, the way it's handled throughout the province is it would take a look at the entire acres that a particular development is developing. There'd be a fee for transportation, off-site levy bylaw, stormwater, environmental, recreation, it would cover a whole variety of things. You don't typically do an off-site levy bylaw over, per lot, usually do it per acres. And, but in this case, it would, an off-site levy bylaw wouldn't apply in that we are now, the development is in, and doing an off-site levy bylaw at this point would be, we're, the horse is out of the barn. And the bylaw, we're developing an off-site levy bylaw will take months.
Okay, thanks for that information.
Any other questions? Just looking for a motion, then?
I'll move that we deny funding the intersection treatment.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council, that council denies the request by Innovative Developments Group for the cost sharing of the intersection treatment to Highway 897 at the entrance of the West 55 Industrial Subdivision, northwest 1363, 3 west of the 4th Meridian. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wondered, is there any kind of upside, have we kind of done any analysis of sort of recouping? You know, if we help 50% share or whatever, you know, how many years does that take us to recoup that through taxes? I'm just wondering if there's any economic development opportunities at all for any, doing any of this stuff? You know, does it, would it, does it bring more sort of industry and more development, industrial to the MD if we consider it, or, I don't know, I'm not sure? Anyway, just a
Comment?
Comment, because we've never really discussed it, but, you know, we've done it in the past, and I'm not sure how, you know, how those discussions ever went in the past, and why we did it in the past, so I'm just wondering if admin has ever looked at, is there any benefit at all to doing it?
Okay, thank you for those comments.
Through the Reeve, to Counselor Swiger's question, I guess it is a, I think Counselor Swiger asked a very good question. The problem is, we have so much surplus land that's already been subdivided to the MD, that the only way for the MD to actually do a calculation on what the tax revenue would be and would there ever be a payback in terms of the tax revenue, would be as to what we felt the viability of these lots being sold. As long as these lots are empty and there's absolutely no real revenue being generated from a tax perspective, it could take years. I look at Aurora Borealis, for example, that is a completed subdivision beside the airport with paved roads, and it's probably 30%, maybe 40% built out, if that. So something along Highway 892, that's a development of this scale and scope, which is a large development, how many years before it would be developed enough for us to see any return? If all of the lots were sold today and businesses were planning on building, then that would be something to consider. But I look at the inventory that's currently available throughout the MD for commercial lots, and I don't know how we would even do that calculation, because that would assume that their build-out would be taking place fairly quickly. And I don't see building out taking place quickly in any of our commercial subdivisions right now.
Yeah, I agree, it's kind of slow, might be logging trees on some of them before you make a development. Yes, Deputy, sorry, Counselor Fedeau?
Yeah, I think, I think the opportunity for that development is a little better than most of the stuff around, because of the development that's happening on the base. The key issue for that development is, we've been fighting to get natural gas in there for years, and we kept getting, moving around with different ministries. I think we have to, you know, find out what minister is in charge again, and kind of sell ourselves again on that. It's tough to develop something that large, or the shops that large, when you're dealing with just propane. So I think our fight for, you know, for natural gas is of the utmost importance, and keep fighting the board for that and getting it out there. There's got to be better ways.
Yeah, guys, they're not going to be cutting wood too. You know, throw wood into a wood stove to heat some of these shops. Any, any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto 9.3.4.
Administration has received a community action grant application under the event program funding level stream from the Bonneville and District Recreation Sports Association, requesting financial support for the 2024 Bonneville Junior A Pontiacs Hockey Season. As per policy 3C012, our community action grant policy, the association has applied as a nonprofit organization for sponsorship funding towards their 2024 hockey season. Administration has completed an evaluation of the application based on the requirements of the policy, found in Appendix B, and is seeking award confirmation from council. The MD has previously provided funding to this group as follows. In 2021, we had two registrations for their golf tournament in August, valued at $500. And also in '21, we provided a season rank board sponsorship for their '21-'22 season, valued at $4,500. And last year, for their '22-'23 Junior A Pontiacs Hockey Season, we, they were successful in a community action grant valued at $4,500. Attached for council's review, in Appendix A is a copy of their application, Appendix B is a copy of the scoring matrix utilized by administration and completed by administration, and Appendix C is our grant policy. And Appendix C is our grant policy. Reference to our strategic plan is goal three, promoting community development. Costs and source of funding, the cost of this award would be five thousand dollars, not five dollars, my apologies for that. And a source of funding would be our twenty-three community action grant operating budget. Our communication strategy is the applicant would be notified in writing of the decision today. Administration's recommended action is that council approves the Bonneville and District Sports Association Community Action Grant application for sponsorship of the Bonneville Junior A Pontiacs twenty twenty-four hockey season in the amount of five thousand dollars to be funded from the twenty-three operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just looking for a motion?
I just have a question. So that, that's for the twenty-three, twenty-four season, right? That's not for the, the second question is if it's for twenty-four, why aren't they applying in twenty-four?
Through the Reeve, so they had initially submitted an application for the twenty-three, twenty-four season. However, as per policy, we do not provide retroactive payments for something that's already started. Therefore, they, they amended their application and submitted it in just for the season starting in twenty-four, which technically would start January first.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so then that's out of the scope for applying then, right? So would they, would just not come up to the twenty-four budget? Not the twenty-three, if it's going to be retroactive to the first? Because we denied a lot of, a lot of other halls and things like that because they didn't fit in the, the framework that we had. So just a question.
Sure. Through the Reeves, through the, our community action grant policy does not disclude events or functions that are occurring in twenty twenty-four. Our community association operating grant is for expenses in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three, it's a calendar year. However, community action grant applications do not have that requirement.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Skarsen?
Yeah, I'm a little bit torn on this one too because, you know, just like Councilor Fedeau mentioned with the halls and stuff, you know, we turned down a lot this year that, you know, to me is, I understand why we did, but to turn down our own halls and stuff to, to give money to an adult hockey team, I don't know, it doesn't sit well. And, you know, it's my understanding that they don't pay for their practice ice either, which we don't get any recognition for, right? So, you know, that's twenty-five thousand bucks a year in, in practice ice too, that we're kind of covering already, right?
So
Yeah, go ahead.
To Councilor Skarsen there. You're saying this is for the adult team? And they're, they're already receiving twenty-five thousand dollars for the practice ice at no cost to them?
That's my understanding. That's what the ice quarter, quarter company would ask for, so.
Someone like to make a motion? Or a different motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make option number three then, that we deny it.
Okay, thank you, Councilor, oh, sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick for making a motion on behalf of council that council denies Bonneville, oh, sorry. There it is. That council denies the Bonneville and District Sports Association Community Action Grant application for the sponsorship of the Bonneville Junior A Pontiacs for the twenty twenty-four hockey season. Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, through Reeve. Could they apply for this grant like two thousand and twenty-four?
Through the Reeve, no, they could not because the intake deadline for the first one in twenty twenty-four is March fifteenth. And the season would have started in January first. So we do not, the policy does not allow retroactive expenses.
You're saying the season starts at January first?
Correct. Their application reflects the sponsorship of the season starting January first, twenty twenty-four.
Any other discussion on this motion?
Sorry, Mr. Reeve, I, I didn't quite understand that. So can you say that really slow then? So they could never apply because their season starts, doesn't coincide with our grants?
Through the Reeve, no. So, so somewhat, when they first submitted their first application, it was for the twenty-three, twenty-four season, but the intake deadline is October fifteenth. So because their hockey season started before October fifteenth, they couldn't apply for that intake deadline because we do not, the policy does not allow for projects or expenses that have started pre-approval of, of the, of the grant. So their only option was, if they wanted to continue forward, was either they missed the deadline and they should have applied in June fifteenth at that intake time for the twenty-three, twenty-four season, or they apply for October fifteenth deadline, but just for the twenty twenty-four season.
Mr. Reeve, so I did have one more question. So when you look at their budget, it's, it's a pretty good budget. It's like, we're talking, I don't know, three or four hundred thousand dollars, so. The, the five thousand they're asking, is five thousand, I think, right? What was it for specifically? Just, I'm not seeing a specific.
Through the chair, I'll just pull up their actual application form. The detailed description of their initiative is that the Pontiacs are requesting funding for the twenty-four portion of their AGHL season.
Yeah, I kind of read through that, but it wasn't like most groups say, I'm, I'm going to, you know, put on an event or something and we need this much money for the event. So it's, okay, well, I think you've answered the question. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And me again? Well, my thing ain't, I hit the thing and it doesn't. All right. It's Carrie. Okay, I guess we're going to break for lunch.